And the FS can also sleep tight for the next budget exercise. Mr. Candy Leng, thank you, Madam Deputy. Like Ms. Eddie Chu, I'd like to talk about the amendments on Head 170. And this is the remedial measure taken out by the financial statutory before Mr. Fa Chen came on board. He was criticized and after this exercise, he was still being criticized. When we look at the application criteria for the caring and sharing scheme, there are different criteria. One, an applicant must be aged eighteen and above and holds a Hong Kong identity card. And C, he or she must ordinarily reside in Hong Kong. And D, the applicant must not benefit from the two-month extra allowance of CSSA, OALA, OAA, or DA announced in the eighteen to nineteen budget. And E. And the applicant must not be eligible for, to pay salary tax in seventeen to eighteen. And F, the applicant must not hold any properties in Hong Kong. So some very accurate calculations were in play in determining which persons should be eligible. But we are talking about the budget rather than a bookkeeper. It's not about sharing the money equally. And we should not make deductions. This is not the vision we have in mind. And I would not call this a forward-thinking or visionary budget. So why was there the caring and sharing scheme? There are three reasons. I'd like to talk about these three reasons. First, the government lacks long-term planning and a vision. Even if they have the money, they have nowhere to spend it. The FS has some more than one hundred and forty billion dollars, but they do not know how to spend it. And number two, in terms of viability, the FS might feel that some people were left behind for some reason, which was why some additional subsidies or assistance was provided. As mentioned in the forty-ninth paragraph of his budget speech, he talked about the budget strategies, and there are seven of them. The sixth strategy says, caring for and sharing with the community by enhancing support for the disadvantaged and enabling members of the public to enjoy the fruits of our economic success. I think the caring and sharing scheme is a realization of sub-paragraph F, that is, enabling the public to share the fruits of our economic success. But when we look at the implementation of the scheme, apart from the ten billion-odd dollars being paid, there are a lot of incurred costs, including staff, offices, IT expenditure, publicity and printing, as well as other costs altogether. These make up three hundred and eleven million dollars for eleven-odd billion dollars of payouts. Madam Deputy, I'm against the scheme. Well, in twenty-eleven to twelve, the former FS, John Chang, gave out six thousand dollars to everyone. He gave out three hundred and thirty-seven billion dollars. The administrative costs, including bank fees, postage, and publicity costs only amounted to one hundred and thirty million dollars. If we consider the financial monitoring standards for listed company, this handout exercise is a complete failure. Why are we handing out cash at the first place? And it was certainly political. And however, such handouts fail to alleviate such pressure because the government is still being criticized.
If we think that we should carry out some remedial measures all the time, if we need to do this all the time, I mean, the government should have a system, some big data to use, such as bank accounts held by our people, which is sensitive. Maybe next time you want to do another round of caring and sharing, or you may want to consider other measures to share the fruit of the economic development, which has never been introduced before. For example, you want to give everyone six months of free rise on MTR. Of course, the money will be paid by the government to the MTR to cover the costs. Or we may want to expand the traveling subsidy or give more to the beneficiaries. Or maybe the student loans can be waived or the repayment period extended. Some of these are options that we can consider. These measures will not involve very cumbersome and troubling arrangements and measures for implementation. I think it's not really the job of the FS to calculate which one should, which one of the publics should get how much. I don't think people would mind if I get a hundred or two hundred more than the other. Impression or perception is important in the decision-making process. This is really bad. The perception that we have now is not good. And on the longer-term horizon, we have this issue of not knowing how to spend surplus money. Our policies may need a few years of preparation before implementation. But directors of bureaus should not say that this year, I cannot really be specific about the amount of money to be spent on certain policies, then I would rather not spend any. There was a study into a budget, which was announced in mid-April. In the past, the government would set up dedicated funds. Back then, Madam Deputy, the government of the FS set up these dedicated funds. And many people said that if you just had the money earmarked without any proper policies to guide the spending, then you cannot claim that you have already budgeted for the measures. So when we look at this budget, do we look at it from a long-term view? Or do we just look at this year? Whether this is a good budget in this first year of the current term of government? The CE and the FS are unable to tell us the thinking, the philosophy behind. For example, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, fifty billion for healthcare reform, one billion set aside for financial support to the single-toe elderly living on their own. So it's important that we should look forward and we should also look back. We should look at the provisions, the funds provided in previous years. How are they doing? What has been done? And what is going to be done this year? And if for this year, you make provisions, tens of billions of dollars have been provided for some other measures to be implemented in the next few years. So the term of the government is five years. This is something the government should do from year to year. You should not just be looking at that particular year, just one year. If you fail to be broad-minded, this year you help the middle class and next year you help the end-nothing people. And then the low-income people would complain that you have helped students and young people. So every year, there will be groups of people criticizing the budget. That's unavoidable. But the government is supposed to be doing its job for five years. And you must cater for both the future and the past. If the government can be so broad-minded, then such problems will not happen. Well, I have so many comments on this head. People ask me how I would vote on the amendments. I said I didn't know. I had a dream yesterday, a dream of Mr. Karl Marx. It's the twenty-second anniversary of his birth. In the dream, I heard this remarks of Karl Marx. He said, "From each according to his ability and to each according to his need." This is the grand master behind the socialist thinking, said, "From each according to his abilities." So that may have, maybe, may have been realized. Because you pay tax according to your income. We have a marginal tax system as well. "To each according to his need." Are we able to do this? Is it done through giving everyone four thousand dollars? I'm at a loss. Even if we practice socialism, we should give handouts properly. Those in need should get the sweetness. But now, whether you have the need or not, you receive four thousand dollars or the difference between the tax rebates and rate rebate and so on and so forth. So I asked Mr. Karl Marx, "How should I vote?" Well, it's a political decision, he said, and you have to think it through yourself. So up to this point, I don't know. I don't know how to vote. There are some good points in respect of the financial system and innovation. But there are others, which are heavily criticized by many, especially the measures to help the underprivileged and the measures to help with long-term development. The budget fails to provide a long-term vision and has not been able to carry on with past efforts and chart way forward. And then Karl, Mr. Karl Marx disappeared in my dream. I still have one more night to have a dream. If I see Karl Marx again, I would perhaps come up with a decision. We're now having a debate on the second session of the appropriation bill. Twenty-seven members have spoken for fifteen times. Mr. Candy Leng, you have just spoken once in this session, but you have been speaking a lot about the overall budget and also the long-term views and also the voting, the decision on how to vote. I hope members who are about to speak would just focus on the amendments. Because members have already spoken for fifteen times, fifty times, rather. Mr. Lok Chong-hung, this budget is one delivered with some new thinking, announced by the CE. And the public expenditure would take up twenty-one percent instead of more than twenty percent of our GDP. And there's a lot of investment, fifty-six billion in I and T and other investment on healthcare. Why are these ignored? I have to start with Head sixty-seven, one seventy-three, subhead one, one seventy-three. And that is the so-called caring and sharing or remedial measures, ten-point-eight billion dollars. Why do we have to spend what, ten-point-eight billion dollars on this subhead? It's because there's some price force in the way this budget is devised. The budget has failed to come up with a judgment or a view on capital, which is, which can be very exploitive, a form of exploitation and unfairness resulting from this. According to Karl Marx, well, some other members have mentioned Karl Marx. Karl Marx was a philosopher, a revolutionary, two hundred years ago. Well, he might not be able to know about the elaborate form of exploitation that we see nowadays. In his time, he would notice, notice child labor and exorbitant rent demanded by landlord and so on and so forth. But exploitation can be much worse than what he saw. The accumulation of capital and the wealth gap have not been improved because of economic growth. Especially, the appreciation of assets means that people can gather accumulated waste through speculation in stocks or through the investment. And that is to say, wealth can grow without having to involve, without having involved any form of production. So the government should make use of public financial measures to redistribute wealth. People expect to get something to have a sense of well-being. Well, especially when the Macau SAR government gives people cash handouts year after year. We are, of course, very envious of them. But everyone, including the Pan Democrats, should shoulder some of the responsibility. I won't name them. Because first, they did not, they did not support the cash handout. And now they are all supportive. Either you give money to those who have paid taxes, including rates or people who have paid salary tax or profit tax. And if the government has a surplus, this, some money is given back to you. But for those who are poor, who have special needs, we need to be care, we have to be caring. That's, of course, right. But the ratio is not right, four to one. That is to say, the, those who get a tax rebate would get four and the grassroots would get only one. Why do we need to collect taxes? It's meant to be a tool to redistribute wealth. We have one hundred and fifty billion dollars in surplus. So we should give some money back. The government should learn a bitter lesson from this exercise.
And don't repeat it in the future. We hope that we can have a big surplus in the future. But we have to look at how the revenue is generated. If you just depend on stamp duty, a high land price sale, then the society has to pay a high price. So we should reflect on that. Now, we, we can only call this caring and sharing scheme a remedial measure. It's better to have it than not having it. We will continue to slam the government. But it's better than having the government doing nothing. The government must reflect on this. Now, on other amendments, and, and that is Head one hundred and eighty-six. Mr. Raymond Chan has asked to cut the expenses of the transport department. I disagree with it. I'm not saying that the transport department does everything right. But if you ask for a slash of the expenses of the government departments, it will do no help in improving their services. Now, the budget has proposed for the non-mines tested public transport fare subsidies. But inflation is ever-rising. And MTR buses, ferries, trams, et cetera, applying for fare rise ranging from three to ten percent. So that poses a heavy burden to the average citizen. The threshold is quite high. Four hundred dollars is a transport subsidy for, well, can we lower it to three hundred dollars? Because you pay, say, ten dollars per day, then you can benefit. And then the rebate is only one quarter. Can we increase it to one-third? The estimated expenditure is eight hundred million dollars. But then the government is receiving tens of billions of dollars from the MTRC. Can you not cross-subsidize that fare with your income from the MTRC? The FDU and other organizations have proposed the idea of a transport fare, stabilization fare. Can the government be more lenient or generous? And for those aged sixty to sixty-four? The government has been proposing for the elderly to get a job again. But these people are in the plight in the labor market. Some employers are treating them unfairly because they think they are less competitive. And what is worse is that they don't enjoy the two-dollar fare concession in transport yet. And if you don't give them two dollars, maybe they could be given a half-fare concession. They want this to be done. In the long term, they want two dollars fare concession in transport. That covers most transport modes. But then trams, which carries unique characteristics, is not covered. So I have to voice a concern on behalf of the tram. Because the tram charge is too low a fee. A fare is two dollars something, and then the elderly are paying only one dollar or so. So there is no need for this two-dollar fare concession. That's not fair to the tram. You are penalizing the tram company and also the staff of the tram indirectly. If the trams don't operate well, then they get a lesser income and they will not get a salary rise. And this is the cheapest mode of transport in Hong Kong. It carries the very unique local characteristics. So for those aged sixty-five, can they enjoy free tram rides? And there are recently, many elderly tram passengers are switching to buses and MTRC. And, and this is so very unfair to trams. So I hope the government can heat up his. Mr. Michael Lu, I would like to understand what amendment you're referring to is about Head one hundred and eighty-six. Mr. Raymond Chan has asked for a slashing the expenses on transport, of transport department. Well, if you would like to speak on policies, well, that should not be something to be debated on in the second session. Please speak to the subject matter, please. And then Head one hundred and fifty-two, an amendment moved by Ms. Claudia Mo. And that has to do with the CEDB. At two hundred, twenty-six-point-three million dollars will be slashed. I think that won't help, so I won't support this. It's just a political gesture on her part. Now, I think this year, the government has devoted, been devoting resources to promote tourism. It has taken heed of our views and that that would be a pilot scheme worth twelve million dollars on promoting local characteristics. The application threshold is quite high. The applicants have to pay a sum upfront. So there have been few applications coming into the government. So since we have the policy, we must encourage the sector and the district organizations to promote local tourism with local characteristics through this program. And we can also engage the public in these programs. I particularly note that there are some guided tours in local districts, and they've been doing well. Now, for this pilot scheme, such district organizations may not meet with the eligibility criteria. So I hope the threshold can be lowered. And then Head one hundred and seventy-three, the FS has proposed injecting eight-point-five billion dollars into the continuing education fund to increase the maximum amount of subsidy. We propose to increase the subsidy to forty thousand dollars. Now is twenty thousand dollars is an improvement in any case. Well, the government gives us the perception that it is miserly, increasing from ten thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. But for the upper ten thousand dollars, the subsidy amount is sixty percent only. And the government's explanation is that they fear that the training organizations will overcharge the courses. Well, whether they will overcharge depends very much on the market competition. There will be a checks and balance. So if they overcharge, nobody will study their courses. And also, the government should gatekeep their fees. Now, you want to subsidize the public to have continuous education. You give them something and you want something back. You withdraw something. So I think the government's thinking is out of touch with reality. So if you want to do it, do it all the way. So for the first ten thousand dollars, eighty percent. For the second half, second ten thousand dollars, eighty percent too. So I hope that you can heat FDU's request. And for the income working family allowance, there has been improvement. We support it. And also, the working hours have been some relaxations recently. A lot of the workers are making applications assisted by us. Now, we are asking how, we are having a nine, one hundred and ninety-two hours as a threshold for a full subsidy. But for, say, junior post and junior civil servants, if they work five and a half days, then they will work forty-four hours per week and they will work one hundred and seventy-seven hours per week. They can't enjoy the full subsidy. It's a full-time job. It's not they don't have any motive to work. They are working on this full-time job in the civil servants. And then they, they should not be asked to work some other part-time jobs in order to achieve the one hundred and ninety-two hours criterion. So coming back to what I said in the beginning, that's, that, you should do something to. So, uh, coming back to what I said in the beginning, that's, that, you should do something to make people happy. Now, last week, I wanted to, uh, say a lot more, but well, last week I was ill for the whole week. I attended the meetings here, but I couldn't speak. So what matters most, the government should learn, uh, this bitter lesson this year. And when you work on the budget next year, well, do a better job. Thank you, Madam Chair Deputy. Mr. Michael Look, we still have a third session of debate. Dr. Kua Kaki, thank you, Madam Deputy.
I am speaking on amendment number forty-one, head one hundred thirty-seven, subhead zero zero zero. And I would like to slash his, uh, salary for one month, um, since the secretary is here. So I will be speaking on, uh, this. Uh, Mr. Eddie G, uh, was very lenient to you by moving this motion. For other amendments, we are asking for a cut of the salary for the whole year. But here, your, uh, your salary will be cut for one month. So it's just a slight slap in the face. If I, um, to amend this, I would say at least half a year's pay should be cut. Now, if we talk about the environmental, uh, policy in Hong Kong, reduction of waste at source and how to have a good separation of waste, et cetera, in the past five years. Well, Secretary, you are new in your second term. I think, uh, things are coming to a standstill. Um, there have been seemingly new policies, including the Eco Park in Tsuen Moon. And also the government has, uh, launched or has undertaken two tasks which are controversial. First is, uh, expanding the landfill in Tsuen Moon and then in Sha Koo Chow, built the incinerator. Back then, at the Ledge Call, you told us that it will cost twenty-four billion dollars. Well, it's still a long way before it is commissioned. Now, the government has overspent by thirty percent. An additional seven point five billion dollars will be incurred. Well, overspending is a norm now. The government has become numb to this. So how come the government is not gatekeeping? When you applied for funding back then, you didn't tell us that there would be cost overrun. We haven't even started the works yet. And when we really embark on the construction, going by past records, the cost can still rise further. We wonder how the contract signed between the government and the contractor is like. Well, the government just uh, the government coffers has been turned into an ATM. When we talk about, uh, environmental facilities, the operating costs of the landfills, et cetera. And the incinerator yes, yet to be, um, commissioned. There has already been an, uh, cost overrun of thirty percent, amounting to seven point five billion dollars. Why is that the case? Now, for the, according to certain reports and the government's papers, a Singaporean company, uh, got the contract. And together with another contractor, it formed a joint venture, which went on the bit. Chen, um, it is a, a, a subsidiary of an SOE on the mainland. And the, it is responsible, say, for the, um, Hong Kong Chih Ha Macau Bridge and also, uh, the third runway. It is using certain materials to replace another material, kind of materials. These are the very, uh, bad performance records of the SOEs, but then the government keeps using them. Now, some residents talked to me and they said that we, um, still have to spend a lot on infrastructures. And the residents said that the SOEs are queuing up to get money from Hong Kong. So this is a very typical example, the artificial island. The, uh, drifting of the, uh, steel structure and for reclamation, they are using inferior materials to, um, in place of the quality materials. They will continue to win contracts. There are still more contracts in the pipeline. Tong Chung Reclamation. And then and East Lantau, um, Reclamation, which has gone ten shares, we oppose it. These are the contracts in the pipeline with the loyalists here. Um, the money will be spent. Um, in any case, the faster this money is spent, the better they think it is. Well, we said is twenty-four billion dollars for the incinerator. Now, it has soared to thirty-one point four billion dollars.
This, um, points to poor efforts in terms of environmental efforts. We have been talking about increasing the recycling rate for solid waste. And we have been talking about reducing kitchen waste or food waste as well as waste paper and waste plastics. The, um, recycling rates have been very poor. And, um, only thirty percent of the waste is properly separated or sorted. There are two types of people. There are people who would insist to, um, dispose their waste in recycling bins while the others would simply ignore it. For people who don't recycle, they would tell you that the, um, recyclables would still end up in landfills. How much of the recyclables would only, um, would go to the recycling bins? No one knows. According to a number of reports and, um, decoy operations, many recyclers would dispose them at landfills. So, um, this is a lose-lose situation. We lose hundreds of millions of dollars to recyclers who are expected to do their job. But this is not the case. They would, um, dump the recyclables at landfills. And in terms of solid waste, there are substantial costs because landfills are not free. We need to spend a lot to maintain landfills. Um, the secretary might say that it's, it's worth spending a lot of money. So in terms of our policy on the environment, um, the plan has not been executed. The secretary has often talked about the Paris Agreement. So how many, um, items stipulated under the agreement would actually be, be done? And, um, how many would, um, come up empty? In terms of municipal solid waste, there have been consultations, but we are yet to, um, discuss the charging mode and the discussions are still ongoing. I'm sure by the end of this current term, there would be another consultation document. We are spending, um, dozens of billions of dollars, but you said you have no money for hospitals and no money for the elderly people. You are spending thirty-one point four billion dollars on an incinerator, which I call a white elephant. So, um, what was promised before would not be implemented. So how can the public trust the government? Madam Deputy, the, um, chief secretary said that for government buildings, they are not allowed to sell, um, bottled water. And the government is coming back constantly for funds for new buildings. But, um, they do not have drinking fountains because there is no such policy. The Architectural Services Department would not have it and it would not be included in, um, engineering contracts. Even the E V D's visitor centers have no drinking fountains. What I want to say is that from these matters, one can see the government's mentality. They are coming for funds for a landfill. You are speaking for the third time. Please focus on the amendments you refer to. For amendment number forty-one, the, um, secretary's salary is to be, um, reduced by one month. I think one month of, um, reduction is too little. It should be at least two months. Mr. Wong Kung Sing is not the most, um, despicable secretary. We, um, want you to, um, do some concrete work. As for the, um, Scheme of Control Agreements for the electricity tariffs, this is again, um, ridiculous. The, um, government came up empty again on its, um, promise on the, um, previous, uh, contract or agreement. And, um, you promised to link the renewable energy to, um, the power grid. And, um, some people invested fifty or one hundred thousand dollars on, um, solar panels and but they are, um, unable to, um, break even. As for the unauthorized works in the rural areas of the new territories. And people are saying that if you do not, um, if you allow my unauthorized works to exist, I would install some solar panels. But I hope the government would not do that. So, um, this, um, arrangement means that for the coming agreement, the two, um, power companies would again, um, capitalize on our situation. Perhaps you would have another, um, internal discussion. And, um, the two power companies have represent, have representatives or, or proxies in the, um, election committee. But, um, has the, um, secretary or government done their job? I think, um, this is very sad to see. Recently, the secretary and secretary for development, um, went to, um, reservoirs to install panels or power panels. I'm not sure that this is bad, but, um, you have missed the most, um, significant items. And you are ignoring the, um, budget or cost overruns. Installing a few panels at reservoirs would not do anything. Recycling efforts in Hong Kong have been very poor. And people are still using, um, tons of plastic bottles. And the government has no consistent policy to govern that. You were still new in the previous term, but, um, you are already at your second term. You've been in office for six years. So I hope that these motions would spur you into action. But if we do not, um, resort to such move, the government would ignore us. I think, um, we, we are only deducting your salary by one month instead of one year in the case of, um, your boss, Carrie Lam. Well, I hope that, um, we can actually, um, raise your salary come next year. In one year's time, can our poor environmental and recycling policies change? And I'd like to talk about electric cars. You might say that this has to do with transportation. The fact is, electric vehicles are an important way of reducing roadside emissions in developed cities. A lot of, um, wealthy people would buy electric vehicles. Well, for the people who want to buy electric vehicles, even if you raise prices or even if you double or triple the prices, they would buy them nonetheless. Because each vehicle costs at least nine hundred thousand dollars. But there is a lack of coordination between government departments. So I'm not yet decided on my stance, but I hope the secretary can think about that. Dr. Cheng Chong Tai, speaking for the third time. Thank you, Madam Deputy. I'd like to talk about amendment thirty-nine and forty on the Innovation and Technology Bureau heads. And, um, one is the, um, annual remuneration of the, um, secretary for innovation and technology and the, um, I N T, um, Living Fund under the I T B. I want to declare my interest because, um, what I'm about to say might be, um, relevant to some of the apps, um, supported by the fund. And I would go into details in a moment. As for these two amendments, I find them very reasonable. First of all, the, um, Innovation and Technology, um, Living Fund. And this is one of the key initiatives to encourage innovation and an innovative economy in Hong Kong. And, um, the deduction would be more than one hundred million dollars for twenty eighteen to nineteen. And, um, I propose, well, I support such deduction because the I T B has been, um, coming up with, um, redundant funds. There is also a lack of vetting. And, um, if there's a lack of, um, gatekeeping, there would be conflicts or transfer of interest in the future. I want to give a simple example. And, um, recently, the, um, Innovation and Technology Fund for Better Living, or F B L, has, um, uploaded certain proposals online. And one of the proposals illustrated why there is a lack of gatekeeping and funds are issued casually. And, um, this is about the research of a new app. The app is, um, uh, is an app to promote, um, a kind of Kung Fu. And through this, um, smartphone game, elderly people are encouraged to take up, um, this exercise. And, um, the elderly people already, um, have exposure to the Kung Fu. So why would they want to use an app to practice, um, this, um, Ba Duan exercise? But, um, the funding is four point five million dollars. So four point five million dollars are used to develop an app to encourage elderly people to practice the Ba Duan Gam exercise. So I should, um, also apply for ten million dollars to, um, develop an app to educate people on how to sing the national anthem with the correct accents. And the applicant is a Kaifeng Association. And their first innovation and technology project is to develop an app to teach the elderly to practice Ba Duan Gam exercise. This is just unfathomable. How can this, um, how can this be, um, used to promote innovation and technology? Well, the secretary is not here, but, um, so an app, Ba Duan Gam and elderly people, how can you promote innovation and technology? This is, we are talking about four point five billion dollars for four year. This is, we're talking about four point five million dollars for four years. So this is just unbelievable. You might say that there are other meaningful projects and I would not deny that. I also release a new app. My app serves to promote a community economy between small merchants and residents. And in the past, there were ads for nanny services or tuition services. So I just published this new app and I should apply for the F B L. And I should ask for ten million dollars. Is that possible?
So from this example, you can use, you see how this can really promote I N T. Four point five million dollars for the promotion of Ba Duen Gom exercise using mobile phones. There are organizers working on this front already. So do we need to give four point five million dollars to someone to promote this exercise? This is not a way to spend the funds of the I N T Fund for Better Living. This is just a small part of the provisions this year. The total is of fifty to sixty billion dollars. But you can see from this example, they were spending money on totally inappropriate measures. So that's, that's why this is amendment would involve docking the pay of the secretary for one month. And according to the secretary, they are going to have an emission scheme for the I T talent to encourage overseas I T talent to come to work in Hong Kong. And the whole process would be expedited and can be completed within a few weeks. Because they want these I T people to be emitted as talent because the Quality Migrant Scheme and the Emission of Talent Scheme cannot meet their needs. But this is an additional scheme for the admission of I N T talent. If you go to the website of the Immigration Department, how many schemes are there? There are general, the Emission Scheme for Employment, Emission of Mainland Talent, that's another one. Targeting mainlanders. It's not about labor importation or emission of talent. And then for non-local graduates, there's another scheme to remain, to work in Hong Kong after graduation. And also the admission of a second generation Hongkongers, children of Hong Kong residents to come back to Hong Kong to work. So with so many admission schemes for different people, why do we need to yet add another one to this complicated system for the admission of I N T talent? And this is specifically for the Cypress Port and the Science Park. You may think that, you may argue that this is based on the population policy of Hong Kong. But I think we should look into the political dimension of this scheme. And it should be properly assessed. It's not just about giving our land and fifty billion dollars on this science park. They have this inner space which will involve renting out premises to people working for these I N T companies at forty percent discount. I started to have queries about inner space. Why is it that you are going to use our land and you provide tax rebate to attract mainlanders to set up to set up new startups in the Science Park? And now we have this admission of I N T talent which will involve moving an entire work unit from the mainland to this Science Park. And that is this enterprise in the mainland will move in a lot to Hong Kong. Back in the eighties, there were people from rural regions going to the coastal areas to work as migrant workers. Yes, I know, I would be returning, I would be coming back to this scheme. I think this scheme should not be looked, regarded as a purely as purely as an admission scheme for talent. Free market should be able to make adjustments itself. But now you want to take our land in the Science Park and our money so that you can recruit people from the mainland. And the employer will have to provide accommodation, i.e. inner space and also the boarding and accommodation. This is like back then when people established factories in Tongguan and the employers had to provide accommodation and quarters. Please return to this amendment. I think the Secretary for I N T should have his pay reduced because he's not doing the job under his purview. It should be about promotion of science, the spirit of science. Now he's using our land, our money to attract mainland talent to Hong Kong. Will local I N T companies benefit from this? They said that after recruiting three mainlanders, one local person and two interns would also be employed. So the local people would also be employed. But how many I T companies in Hong Kong would need to hire all these people? And would this be a kind of exploitation? For example, you would be recruiting local people at a local market remuneration rates. But now you bring in mainland people and they will be emitted under the scheme. It's not purely about innovation and technology. It's about changing the market practice. In our market, we do not guarantee anything. We should not provide everything to the employees. And now the worry is that no one will be willing to work in the Science Park. And you make it convenient for mainland companies to recruit people. I think you are in effect eliminating local people from such jobs. I'm now going to talk about the background of this Secretary for I N T. Whether he has a background as a Hong Kong person or so on. But this policy is not really about the promotion of local innovation, R and D, and technology. As I said earlier, we had some research for electric vehicles. We have non-intrusive, non-evasive operations on patients. Why hasn't the secretary mentioned all these? And now we all talk about mobile phone apps. As I said, four point five million dollars was awarded to an app developer to encourage elderly people to practice Ba Duen Gom. So I'm going to support the amendments, number thirty-nine and forty. May I remind you, members, that we are having a debate on the amendments to the Appropriation Bill. In this debate, you should speak on the policies covered by the proposed cut, not the overall policy portfolio. And if the cut is about the operation expenditure or the pay of a public official, you may speak on the performance of the department or the official concern. But there should be no elaborate comment on the overall policy. Mr. Jealamie Tam. Thank you, Madam Deputy. I'm going to speak on amendment number twelve. Amendment number fifty-two, Secretary for Securities, annual pay, because I think he hasn't done a proper job, especially in relation to the management of the government flying service. It's a department with a small establishment. But it doesn't mean that the contribution of G F S is small towards our community. They carry out rescue operations, they help other government departments. They have to go out to rescue people even when the typhoon signal number ten is up. When they have so many problems in staffing, how can the Secretary for Security just turn a bright eye to this? Let me give you some example. For the pilot gray, under the establishment, they should have seventy officers, but only forty-three are in service. That is to say, the vacancy rate is a thirty-nine percent. It's not just for the last year, but for the same, it was, it's for the past few years, fifteen, sixteen, forty-one, thirty-eight, forty-three, seventeen, eighty, forty-three out of seventy are in service. We said, no, how is, how come so many, so few people want to work in the G F S? There's a problem with pay and remuneration, which is not competitive. Just next to the G F S headquarters, there's a commercial aircraft center, commercial aviation center. There are more pilots there than those working in the G F S. So half of them, the half of those who have been trained by G F S are now working in the center next to the G F S headquarters. It would take at least a year before the pilot can be properly trained and licensed. And then the service can be provided. And then it takes another a few more years before the pilot is fully qualified to carry out all sorts of operations. You are talking about one-six-six, one-six-six fifty-two? And that is the full year's pay of Secretary for Security. Well, the wage stage is due to poor pay and conditions of service. And you failed to address the problems. You have been suffering from a high wage stage rate. We wrote to the secretary to ask for some measures to be taken. The answer came and said that there were more posts created. Instead of forty-four posts, there are now seventy posts. But that's not going to be useful. Those posts are not filled. We're just forty-three out of fifty-one. And now it's a forty-three post filled out of seventy. And this year, they are going to get two more, seventy-two posts. But I'm sorry, there will still be just forty-three pilots. And they said that of the forty-three, we are going to recruit more licensed pilots from overseas. How many? Two to four. All right, let's say you have four. And that is to say, out of an establishment of seventy, you have forty-seven pilots and it's still not sufficient.
You don't, you can't recruit people. So how can we recruit such people? And what is more worrying even is that in the next couple of years, there will be even a higher wage stage rate. Why? Because different airline companies have developed rapidly in Asia. And many pilots of G F S have turned to work in the aviation center in, next door. So many owners of airplanes are mainlanders, so they would look for someone who can speak Cantonese or Mandarin. So the pilots will leave their job. And then they are heavily involved in paperwork. The senior they rise to, then the more paperwork is needed. But pilots would like to fly airplanes. They don't want to get in clerical duty. So you have to recruit people to help them with the clerical duties. What is the Secretary for Security working on? No, he's not dealing with that. And then there is another reason for a higher wage stage rate. The G F S has bought a new airplane, a jet. There are jet hours in the market. And now you are buying a new plane. So there is all the more the incentive for the pilots to resign. I don't really understand. So is the high wage stage rate high or not? The vacancy rate now is thirty-nine percent. Well, and for the aviation officers, fifty-five is the establishment and forty-two imposed only. In other words, there is a vacancy rate of twenty-four percent. Now pilots, thirty-nine percent vacancy rate, aviation officers, twenty-four percent is the vacancy rate. Let's look at the marine officers and the ship surveyors, ship surveyors. Well, the relevant government body has been asked to review the surveyors and marine officers' grace. The report has been completed and funding application is coming into the legal. And for the marine officers, the report says that the establishment is fifty-five and thirty-four percent are imposed, thirty-nine percent is the vacancy rate, same as the pilots. And the surveyors, fifty-three is the establishment and thirty-nine imposed. And vacancy rate is twenty-seven percent is like, is similar to the aviation officers. Why are you conducting a great review for the marine department and you are not doing anything to the G F S? And the Standing Commission on Civil Service Pay said that in twenty oh seven, ten years ago, conducted a review and they said that nothing needed to be changed. And that was ten years ago. And times have changed and we are seeing vacancy rate or a high level all the time. So it's been several years. This has happened for several years. So there must be a great review for the air crewmen officers and also the pilots. And they don't have a promotion letter either. Well, the highest rank that they can rise to is chief pilot. And that is not even a chief air crewman officer. So they have a very narrow promotion letter. So they can rise up to D one, the most senior position. There is no further, I mean, promotion because above it I mean, promotion, because above it is already the the director general. And what has the secretary done? No, nothing. He said that ten years ago, the relevant discipline, that the services, conditions of service committee took a look. It doesn't mean that we cannot review it today. The, well, the S B will say that if we do that, then there will be similar requests for great review from other discipline forces, but we have to be mindful about the vacancy rate. For other discipline services, are they seeing such a high vacancy rate? And, and, well, just model after what you've done to the marine department. Well, that happened because of the Lama incident. Does it take, I mean, do you have to really have tests before you are willing to review the grade? And you said that maybe you can consider ways to boost morale. I don't know how to do it, especially taking into account on how you treat the head. The head of Department of the G F S, he is in a direct post. And then he lacks a pip on, in his uniform. In other words, say if you are a director of F S D, you're a police commissioner. Now you have three things in your uniform, and the shoulder part. And that we, well, that's called one crown, one pip, and another ornament. Three things, the head of the G F S lacks one pip. In other words, she, he is just similar to the deputy, the grade of deputy commissioner in other discipline forces. There was a review ten years ago, there was, there was no proposal for change. So his position is maintained as assistant director. Well, even if you are not willing to give a paid rise, why don't you give him an extra pip in the shoulder part of his uniform? Now for, say, police, immigration department, F S D, G F S. So all the heads of the department should have a similar uniform when it comes to the number of pips on the uniforms. So how can you boost the morale of the G F S if you don't do that? You've spent eleven minutes already. You are expressing dissatisfaction towards the various operation of the G F S. Hence, you call for a slash of the salary of the security secretary. I think you have fully expressed your views, I can't allow you to talk too much about the policies on the G F S. Please understand this, understand, Madam Deputy. Well, it's because of the G F S problem that I would like to have his salary slashed. Well, well, just allow me to talk about it for the remaining few minutes. So, so there is a dereliction of duty on the part of the secretary for security because he's, is not treating all the discipline forces fairly. Now, under the security bureau, there are a number of discipline forces and it's, and you are belittling the G F S. So I hope that the G F S has been, can be upgraded in a way. And so fair treatment is given to all discipline forces. So he's failing in his duty. That this has happened for so many years. It's not that he is not in the know, if he has, he says that he doesn't know about it, then I can forgive him. No, that's not the case. We've written to him. It's a lengthy letter outlining various proposals in several pages, setting out the concerns that I just stated. How can, and how can we make sure that the G F S can recruit people? Boosting morale can't be easily done. Well, he would not be able to boost morale by saying that we've conducted a review ten years ago. Now, there are some fundamental issues causing people to leave the G F S because the people in that department think that they are being belittled or despised by the government. So isn't it the duty of the secretary for security to boost the morale of G F S? Well, is it because the number of certain discipline forces is they, they're the manpower, the number of offices in discipline forces is larger, you are paying them more attention, intention? Well, you should not despise them or belittle them just because of the few number of staff in that department. Shouldn't the head of Department of G F S get an extra pip in his uniform? How come that the secretary is turning a blind eye? From the reply of his letter, it shows that he doesn't understand the issue, he just wants to add in additional posts. Well, if you've been able to find enough people, you would not have only forty three pilots. Even if the establishment's fifty has been increased from fifty one to seventy, you are still getting forty three on board. So, yes, you are right, Madam Deputy, I'm speaking about the operations of the G F S. And I use this as an example to illustrate that the secretary for security has not been doing his job properly. And he doesn't have the determination, commitment to resolve problems of departments under his ambit. And I believe that other, other government department or bureau directors have heard my view, please relay my view to him. I'm just here to help him do a better job. Well, I believe that the waste rate will only worsen because there is new aircraft being deployed there. So as long as the pilots have accumulated enough flying hours, they will leave. I hope that you can resolve this. Miss Claudia Mo.
Amendment number twenty three, proposed by my colleague Ray Chen, took up the entire spending for propaganda work by the government information services for the upcoming financial year. Now, if you look it up in the official government web, the information services department is described as, well, the government's public relations consultant, comma, publisher, comma, advertising agent and news agency. This news agency thing comes last, please take note. And then it goes on to say, as a result, it forms some link, right? Provides the linkage between the government and the media, local and foreign, of course. And as a result, could help public, the public, to achieve some better understanding of government policies, decisions, etc. So it's propaganda work. It didn't try to hide, it's on the record, everything is P R for the sake of the government. The question is, why should the taxpayers pay exactly? Or no, no less than fifty million dollars worth of taxpayers' money for such propaganda work? And when they don't do anything more than sugarcoating controversies? Or if they would actually bother to report such controversies in the first place? Or simply present Hong Kong as some sort of bubble of paradise? Let's be honest about it. It is a propaganda machine, the information services department. It is a propaganda setup, nothing but. And of course, you would say that, ah, it is called the government information thingy. So information's information and it's related to the government. And there's nothing particularly wrong with it, right? Ah ha. Please note in Chinese, it is called the government news bureau. Now that title is almost an insult to the word news. Because it's not doing news as such, give me a break. I could quote, well, I mean, of course, if you agree that, yes, to not just Hong Kongers, but to outsiders. We need to present Hong Kong as an entity that's all smart and spiffy and very cheery. Then you have your say, I mean, it's your choice. I beg to differ. And I can say to you one reason why I'm quite so against this G I S today. It's completely different from the days I worked as a full-time journalist. Ever since nineteen ninety seven, I wouldn't use the word handover either, thank you very much, right? Ever since nineteen ninety seven, this particular department has evolved, changed for the worse. It's for much, much worse. Nowadays, it's, well, ever since the department has been headed by bureaucrats who are known to be yes men only. I was going to give you one example, right? And I will now. Last Saturday, we had a public hearing on national anthem law. And who's in charge? The constitutional and mainland affairs minister, right? Sorry, off the top of my head, I couldn't even remember his name, Mister Nip. So there were members of the public giving their opinions on the issue. And one of them, obviously a patriot or, you know, a self-proclaimed patriot, said something like, if you go against the national anthem law, you would be propagating Hong Kong independence. You could be advertising separatism, etc., etc. Those may not be his exact words, but to that effect, right? So I turned around, in between a fairly melodramatic interlude, I posed the same question to our constitutional and mainland affairs chief, who was the head of the G I S in the last decade? He's all, you know, now you see the linkage, right? He's all, you know, being trained and all smartened up for this sort of government work, so-called. I said, could you respond to that sort of allegation? That if anyone would actually be against the legislation, the national anthem law, the person could be propagating, advocating separatism, etc. What do you think? You know what he replied? He said, no, I did not hear that sort of comment, full stop. He sums up literally. He embodies the government stance on people, on popular opinion. We don't want to know. You said something we didn't hear. Turn a blind eye? I just don't want to know, he said he didn't hear. And this is the former G I S head. If I remember correctly, Mister Yao sitting there was also one of the frequently changed G I S heads in Hong Kong.
Miss Mo, you said you are speaking on the deduction on the expenditure of the I S D. But in the past seven minutes, you spent the bulk of your time discussing a public hearing this past week and on what Mister Nip said.
My first three, five minutes certainly was focused on the functions and duties of government information services. That it's a propaganda machine, nothing but, didn't you hear that, right? And I'm trying to link up this whole mentality within the government, which doesn't seem to understand that if everyone sings the same note, you don't get harmony. But it's the other way round to them. In order to get harmony, everyone sings the same note, starting with the G I S, of course. And who pays for those spin doctors? To spin our media taxpayers' money, fifty million altogether, no less. Do you understand all that?
Please come back to the I S D.
I don't need to come back, I am back here. Now, all this has been happening at a time when this is Beijing ordered or Beijing, or at least instigated campaign on Hong Kong's cultural ideological front. This massive deliberate ideological campaign in Hong Kong, right? To shut down our sense of core values, core values, our sense of human rights, rule of law, democracy and freedom. Okay, you said there's nothing to do with the government information services, probably not. The mere advertising agent, publisher, and indeed, public relations consultant. Now, the word consultant irritates me to no end. We pay somebody to consult the government, which would try its best to fool us. Give me a break, right? I mean, what sort of government structure this is? What does the government information services actually do? In Chinese, it says news, in English, it says information. When there is actually a huge, could be a huge difference between the two. Now, information can be weaponry. Information can be used as political tools, we all knew that. It depends on how you spin it. I hope you understand this context of spinning information. The word information is in the label, okay? Government information services. But when it comes to news, which is the Chinese label of this particular government department, news is about what people need to know. What they need to know is public interest. Their right to know too. But of course, there's also this business about the people wanting to know. The people want to know, they don't need to know, but they want to because they're just being curious. They're just being gossipy. Well, we're talking about paparazzi, basically, or puppy squads in Chinese. Paparazzis basically chase pop stars and things. But in this council, we have puppy squats sent along by the government. There are quite a few outside right at this moment. Okay, so what I'm trying to say is, this government department is fairly schizophrenic. On the one hand, it claims to be doing news in some sort of manner, some shape and form. But it's not actually doing anything to the, of the sort. It failed the duty, the function of news miserably. But when it comes to information, aha. They would need to screen in and screen out, of course. They would only talk about government information, the word government comes before information anyway, right? So tell you what, this morning, I was trying to look up whatever the G I S has talked about Ted Hui's fairly dramatic incident lately, right? How it reported this, if not to the local press, to the foreign press. What exactly is the G I S doing these days, right? I looked and looked, haha, what I could find, barely, was supposed top government officials replying to questions from the press on Ted Hui. They wouldn't even dare. They wouldn't even dare to talk about anything on their own. And according to the G I S, they were being asked and they had a courtesy to reply and that's it. It's all completely one-sided, of course, and you call that news? I disagree. You call that information? Well, perhaps, but it's government information. It's propaganda. It's no different from the Central Propaganda Bureau in Beijing. Wouldn't you agree with that statement? So there we are. And I still have two more sheets, don't think I'm finishing. Of course, we don't need to talk about newsworthiness either. Government News Bureau in Chinese, Jingfu Sanmanqu. What's news? Newsworthiness is defined as a subject having sufficient relevance to the public to warrant news attention. And that includes news values. News values to the Government Information Services, of course, is how to present our ministers, our top officials, in a better way, in a more positive way, or at least in harmless way, to say the least. So if you think the G I S is doing Hong Kong any good by spending fifty million dollars worth of taxpayers' money on propaganda work in order to promote, to help along this government, to present Hong Kong as some sort of bubble of paradise, you are wrong.
Your time is up. I'd like to remind members that when you speak, please focus on the amendments on reduction of expenditure. There's no need to go into specific policies or define certain terms. So I'd like our time to be put into better use. Fifty-five members have spoken for the second session. Dr. K K Kwok, thank you, Madam Deputy. I'd like to speak on Amendment Number Six on Head Thirty, Subhead Zero Zero Zero, to deduct the annual remuneration of the Director of Correctional Services. Recently, the Complaints Division of Legal received a number of cases. I was also involved in some of those cases. The biggest concerns circle around the abuse towards inmates at prisons and correctional institutes. And you might have heard about some cases, for example, the Sandy Rich Correctional Institute and the juvenile inmates at the Sandy Rich Institute and other correctional institutes. And their cases are simply terrible because they were subject to extremely cruel treatment, including beating and other unspeakable treatments. For instance, they were forced to drink their own semen as well as other kinds of treatment. And these apply to people who are inside or have left these institutes. Legal members met the Director of Correctional Services to discuss these cases, and we requested visits to some of those institutes. Unfortunately for the visits organized by the C S D, those are model visits. They would make everything look rosy so that legal members would only see the positive things. But when we actually asked the inmates why they did not speak up at the correctional institutes, Madam Deputy, over the course of our discussion or chat, we know that every time they make a complaint, they would be beaten once more afterwards. For example, when J P's visit, if prisoners, including juvenile prisoners, say anything, they would be given a beating by the officers. And at prisons and correctional institutes, these things happen all the time.
Well, if you watch films like that, I don't know if you've seen that before. All right, with regard to what happened in the prison institutes, well, that has to do with those who might be the supervisors. So superintendents are exactly those people in charge of these institutions. So when you ask them to file complaints with them, so what do you expect them to do? So how can you expect the inmates to file complaints against those who are in charge of the prisons? You would not have expected these to happen in this day and time. And when people commit offenses, it's only right that they should be put behind bars. But then for those who have committed offenses before, the purpose of sending them to jail is to enable them to turn over a new leaf so that they would be able to rehabilitate themselves. But then if you think that by beating them up, they would be able to turn over a new leaf, I think that's ridiculous. So how can you expect people to turn over a new leaf by beating them up? So for juvenile offenders, well, in the U S, there's been a very extended linear study. And according to their study, some eighty percent of the inmates have had a different degree of mental conditions, including learning disabilities or A H D H, and also different degrees of autism or Spock's disease and so on. The reason why these juvenile offenders were sent to jail, that's because while they are at the education institutes, they might have underperformed or they might have lost their jobs and so on. So our correctional institutes are not there to help them. In fact, they are abusing their powers by penalizing them with physical punishment. This is really disgraceful. I understand that when you file complaints against the police, you have the I P C C, which is not entirely independent, and there are also unofficial members in the past, well, representative from the Pan Democratic camp would also be sitting on that I P C C. Now, it's only represented or dominated by the pro-establishment camp. Well, Dr. Kwok, I understand that the deputy already reminded you on that. Well, I'm already making the point. So you will have to explain why you'd like to propose a cut to the expenses. Well, I'll be moving on to that because I've been listening to you and I don't think you have been doing that, Dr. Kwok. I think the Director for Correctional Services has been negligent on his duty, and if he had done his job properly, then he should have come up with an independent and transparent complaint mechanism for the C S D. That's the right direction to take. And if we believe that the I P C C has been a well-established mechanism, at least within the government, is an official mechanism which is neutral and impartial in order to prevent the police from abusing their powers, I think it's only right that the C S D should have done the same. And therefore, we should establish an independent correctional services complaint committee. The reason why, I think that the situation with regard to the C S D is even worse than that for the police. Well, for the police, that would only happen for a very short time because in detaining a person without the court order, the police would at best be able to detain a person for up to forty-eight hours. So that's a very short while. But then in the C S D, they can be beaten up time and again, day in, day out, for a very extended period of time. I've already reminded you more than once that your remarks are not really on the amendment. Well, this is about the budget, it's not about a policy. All right, you've already spent seven minutes and still you haven't really touched on the reason why you'd like to propose a lash to his remuneration. Okay, I'm trying to reduce his pay by two point nine two million dollars. Why? That's because he has not been able to do his job properly and he has not been able to provide justice to the inmates of our prison institutes because what he has done has not been able to enable the C S D, that is the Correctional Services Department and also the inmates in particular, the juvenile inmates or juvenile offenders, to turn over a new leaf. And the practice adopted by the director would only mean that the juvenile offenders would be kept behind bar for a reasonably long time, and they would also not be able to integrate or reintegrate into society after discharge. And if the director is not able to come up with a transparent, feasible, and also trustworthy complaint mechanism during his term, then he should not get paid. On the other hand, the C S D has also been involved in a number of outrageous problems or outrageous issues. There have been scandals involving correctional service officers or correctional officers being involved in buying out overtime and also night shifts and so on. And they have been involved in numerous scandals. And for such institutions, they might have been able to escape the public eye during ordinary times because people generally think that well, only those who are underdogs or at the lower rung of society who would go to jail. But then let's not forget that we have spent resources to nurture these people, and if they are able to reintegrate into society, there might be examples. Well, I do not need to repeat that. At public exams, many inmates have been able to get very impressive results, and some have even been able to complete the courses at Open U. And after discharge, they have also been able to become very remarkable persons in our society. Let's not forget that, well, most officers at the C S D are very dedicated, and I'm not trying to offend them. I just want the C S D to learn the lesson in a hard way so that for people who have not been able to see them, so that these inmates might have escaped the public eye when they are beaten up and so on, I just hope that there can be a way to change it. But then if the director, like what he has been telling us in his replies, that the existing mechanism is already adequate, then he must have his pay cut. Because how can he expect the existing mechanism to work? If it had been working, then how can you, how come we are seeing so many inmates being beaten up so many times at public hearings and so on? When these complainants mention such cases, some of them cannot help but break down in tears. So these are things that they would never be able to forget, and that's also related to another issue that's about slashing the Secretary for Security's remuneration because the C S D is under the purview of the Security Bureau, and yet the Secretary of Security has never thought that is his responsibilities. So I've never seen that the Secretary for Security has taken up responsibility for the errors or problems involving the C S D. He has never made any statement on that. And of course, when it comes to the negligence or dereliction of duty by the Secretary for Security, it's not confined to the C S D. I'm turning to that. Well, after the umbrella movement in twenty fourteen with regard to abuse of power by the police, the public are very concerned about this. And yet, since the umbrella movement, on several occasions where there have been conflicts between the police and the public, the public inevitably have this impression that the police would not be able to deal with such conflicts in an impartial manner. It's not just hurting the public sentiments. It would also affect the reputation of the police as well as the morale of the police officers. Let's not forget that for the seven police officers who, well, at a time when the problem of beating up public or members of the public was at its height, when the police were able to escape the public eye or scrutiny, for example, they might have tortured or abused the detainees, inevitably, the confidence of the public in the police would be at its app. Today, well, in dealing with cases involving the police officers, inevitably, that would have to do with the water cannon vehicles procured by the police, and yet the police have not given us any positive reply with regard to the water cannon use. So for people who might be injured by them, how can they be properly protected? Let's not forget that in overseas incidents because of such water cannons, there have been fatalities or some have actually lost their right side because of injuries sustained while they were targeted by the water cannon. And when we took it up with the Secretary for Security, when we asked for the justifications or guidelines for the use of water cannons, under what circumstances would that be used? And what security measures are in place to ensure that it would not cause harm to innocent members of the public? Well, he was not able to come up with a reply. So given the problems of the C S D and the police, the only result is that both the administration and the public would be pitched against each other. They would be at even more bitter lockheads, and that would not be good for Hong Kong society, and that would also not be good in terms of correctional services in Hong Kong. That's why both the Secretary for Security and the Commissioner for Correctional Services, if they continue to bury their heads in the sand, if they are not willing to come forward to face the music, and if the Commissioner for Correctional Services is not able to come up with a proper mechanism to deal with that, to ensure that our inmates would be properly protected, then how can he get paid? Thank you. I'll be talking later. Dr. Loai Kwok. Chairman, I'm talking today to say that I'm in support of the estimates and also the two amendments moved by the F S, and I'm against all the amendments moved by the opposition camp. Since twenty thirteen, Mr. Chairman, every year, those from the opposition camp would be moving a large number of amendments in order to block the passage of the budget. And this year, we have two hundred and thirty amendments, and they are cutting the expenses in various heads. Yes, the number has reduced. The number is still very large, and that's why, after considering and after giving their careful thoughts to the rights of individual members, and also to strike a balance between enabling them to move amendments and allowing for the efficient debate to go on. So some sixty-seven amendments have been allowed. Well, for infrastructure projects that have to be built in order to cope with the housing demands and also the implementation of new town projects, and also to cater for livelihood issues and so on. And as a representative from the engineering sector through various channels, I've been urging the administration to come up with comprehensive planning in order to implement these infrastructure projects in an orderly manner, and also sufficient resources will have to be put into these projects, including the financial commitments and also manpower resources for these projects. We also have to ensure that within the administration, we have sufficient dedicated professional grade We also have to ensure that within the administration, we have sufficient dedicated professional grades and staff to cope with these demands. So that what there is planning, there would be people to do the job so that the governments are promised to the people can be honored and delivered. Well, I remember on the day when the budget was announced in Para one one nine, the F S announced that there would be increasing in manpower. In order to implement the various initiatives and also the pressure on the civil servants would be reduced. In terms of the establishment, there would be an increase by sixty seven hundred, so that's about three point seven percent increase. So that's the record high since the handover. What's more. What's worthy of more attention is that if you look at the in the engineering and construction sector. The size of the increase would be more noticeable, for example, some four hundred and four posts will be increased. That would account for some seven point nine percent of the existing establishment, so that's higher than the overall increase for the entire civil service. And also for professional grades, we should attach more importance to the inheritance and also continuity that should be a regular review mechanism. And there should also be appropriate promotion prospects so as to retain talents. Well, the administration announced. That this year some four hundred posts would be turned into permanent posts and that would also, there would also be extension of other posts. That would involve the development bureau and also the T H B and also the works departments under these bureaus. And some of them would also involve the professionals. I believe that these initiatives will help retain talents and that would also ease the pressure on the civil servants and that would also enable the projects to roll out smoothly.
That will be received at the public and the sector. However, that doesn't mean that the policy bureaus and the departments performances had been. Satisfied and all the. Provisions to this has been reasonable. For example, the water services department, they. They should recruitment only have three percent compared with the water quality enhancement scheme. And they're reducing water sea pitch, I believe that is on the lowest side. I've considered, I urge the government to hire more professional staff to uphold the overall morale and professional standards. However, the amendments proposed by members have gone in the other direction and even. Reduce the operation expenditure of prison emoluments, for example, Mr. Ray Chen. And of the amendment twenty eight proposed by him. To reduce. To the expenditure related to expedite the land supply as well as to streamline the land development procedures of the eighty eight non-directorate positions. And for amendment forty four. Just increasing the enhanced supporting about the engineer, assistant engineer, urban planners, the whole year emoluments. Does not only grant the aim of urging government to improve the services. Then we let the stoppage of the services, which is quite outrageous. President, land and housing supply is the top priority. An issue and the middle class and the young generation hope to own their own homes. The administration had treated as a highlight of their policy, I mean, trying to seek identified sites for housing. However, identify housing supply would involve long-term strategic studies. Thus, the twenty thirty plus. As well as the update on a policy, long-term planning is hope that the. Work planning can be released early and yet the amendment number thirty two and thirty three. As to reduce. Equivalent expenditure on the territory-wide planning as well and the thirty thirty plus sustainable development consultancies. At the same time, Mr. Edit choose amendment number nine. Would as to reduce. The half the operation expenditure of the sustainable land town office. Or this opposition lawmakers think. That all the medium and short-term program as well the public works can be disregarded. And the how the housing demand of the public to be satisfied. The president, a number of opposition lawmakers had this a practice that they would criticize of all this infrastructure projects. And even come up with strange theories. Including that the infrastructures launched by the government were white elephants, which is the equivalent of. Putting government money into a black hole, thus they would try to impede the approval of such projects and the. Finance committee as possible and. And a local legislation process of the co-location bill that would put up a lot of obstacles. And for the operational arrangement of the future infrastructure, that would create stir of trouble. And for the amendment number nineteen proposed by Mr. Ray Chen to aim to reduce. The annual budget for the maintenance of the Hong Kong Jiuhai Macau Bridge by the highway department. There is recent phenomenon that for any collaborations project between Hong Kong and China. Will become a ripe target for criticism in the opposition camp. The engineering sector is perplexed and yet can do nothing about it. So for the H C M B, as I said, of a complicated infrastructure which involve a bridge and a tunnel. The man made island is to let the bridge connect to the tunnel. And for the tetra parts to be installed on the manmade island could be a standard works procedure. And recently, there'll be a lot of media circus and even at the P W A C chaired by me that there's a late discussion. So it all stemmed from an artist's impression. And yet, the object is claiming the original design layout and claiming this is a more shoddy workmanship to that adhered to we should design plan. And accused the government of lack supervision and even accused that the brick water had collapsed. Backed up by a strong figures, such accusations will be found baseless. The directive highways back on the press conference on April ninth, as shown in the PowerPoint have demonstrated. That the bridge head of the manmade island, which is the brick water above the tunnel. Since that is the part where the entry to the sea. So the need to put the dollases on top of the entrance. This only shows the requirement on one and the may as connected the bridge and the tunnel to the other. So the configuration of the dollases will be different. And the tunnel, which is at the island head. A loading will be important consideration so as to the subsidence will not affect the structure, structure of the tunnel. So. The dollases will be in place and for the part entering the sea for every ten meters, there will be fifty five. Two point four eight times two point four eight meters and dollases. Which to three point one meters high, this a random configuration. Is to control the density and let the directions of the tetrapods can be random. Of this density to up to three point one meters, of course, there'll be interlinked. And this will cover a wide area from the island head to the tunnels one hundred and thirty meters long. As for the deep water pit of the tunnel, they will use two meters of rock to protect the tunnels top. And the slab will be a usual protective material and the loading will be controlled as well. So the tetrapods will be scattered on top of the tunnel on the rim. And since there were spaces between the slabs, the density will be lower. It will achieve protection and reducing loading and during the low tide. They'll be able to see the configuration of the dollases and the tetrapods at the island head will. It's just, Dr. Lo, what is your relation of your statement to the amendment? I want to point out. Why the H C M B. Reach future maintenance and should not be subject to the amendment. So during high tide, the tetrapods and the island head will be below the water level. And tetrapods will not be missing or washed away. The biggest problem with that the work, no matter how hard the ports department explained, they don't have no coverage in the press. And while the accusations have been circulating online, gone viral. And president. To understand the mainland engineering standards, I've downloaded J T one two four, one four one two O O one. As well as the works regulation and feel free to download yourself. On the random scattering of the dollases. Which have set out the standards, the beginning of the document point out there are three mandatory provisions to be observed. And one, the first one will be the three point one point six. That will hit the on the wave. On the wave railings, on one hand, the opposition claimed the department to increase the services. In the post, taking a stand to care about the public services, on the other hand, they're making and proposing recent amendments to the appropriations bill. And like Mr. Allokin, moving fifteen, amendment fifteen and seventeen, was to. Reduce, think the budget of international youth exchange program and the funding scheme for mainland youth internship in the mainland. While the amendment number forty, we aims to deal slash the operation expenditure for the I T F for better living. Not only reduce internship opportunities for Hong Kong students and would undermine. The public expectations on the government commitment to apply I N T to improve our likelihood. My add the, Mr. Allokin have not discussed on the, an April twenty to twenty second Bay Area duty visit. He should note that those Democrat Democrats lawmakers have told the press that the I N T development in the mainland. Is to make it alarm about to Hong Kong, Hong Kong should play to catch up, I suggest to Mr. Allokin. And should, unlike other young people, should try to lobby for opportunities to exchange outside mainland. So I speak, President.